I think this is the only room in the whole city or town that would say, "Yeah, that's nice." So fingers crossed, right, that we're going to get some precipitation. Welcome to our November Ned Talk. We are in for a treat. And I'm excited to introduce our speaker, Kathy Adams-Clark. Kind of give you, so for everybody, get your cellphones out, put them on silence so that we're not, we're not doing it. I had to do that in the middle of, I was giving a talk the other day and it started making noises and it was very embarrassing. But anyway, so back to what we were talking about, Texas moths. You know, it's kind of unsung heroes, you know, of the pollinator world and arthropods in general. And so, you know, people kind of pass them by, they see them, you know, at night maybe around their, their light posts or what have you and don't pay much attention to them. But fascinating, fascinating creatures. And Kathy's gonna, you know, help us, you know, learn a little bit more about them today. But what I wanted to share with you, which I thought was really kind of cool, is how this talk came about. And Tom Collins, wave around here. Tom, Tom has been, you know, part of Riverside Nature Center since the founding, more or less. I mean, he worked with Susan Sander and did a lot of nature checklists and things like that here. And with our moths and butterflies and reptiles and everything else, because we don't have our big mammals here. But, so Tom, Tom contacted us and said, "Hey, you know, I know, I know somebody." And, you know, she would love to come. She and her husband are naturalists and they've, they've produced this wonderful, this wonderful book, The Texas Moths. And so, you know, let me, let me introduce you. So, okay. So, you know, so by way of Tom, we get in touch, you know, with Kathy and say, "Yes, we'd be very interested." And then I learned today that there's another connection, and that's, that's the Jays. And so Sharon and Kathy have a connection with through photography and they're, they're property and comfort. And Kathy does all kinds of workshops on wildlife photography there. And then, you know, we're sitting there and we're talking, and then there's this lovely couple that comes in and says, "Oh," you know, and hugs her.
Preston and Dorothy.
And so, I'm, you know, I'm looking around and it's just so, it couldn't be more appropriate for a nature center, you know, to have a speaker who has all of these, you know, connections and the interconnections that are happening, you know, within the community. And so, very much, you know, illustrating all the connections that we have in the natural world. And so, you know, we're not very far removed, if removed at all. So, anyway, I'm not going to go into biographies and, and, because I think you're going to kind of tell us your, your trek or the journey in producing this wonderful book. And so, back in the back, we have copies that are available. And if they are on a special sale today only, so $36 plus tax, sorry, for, for this book that regularly retails for $42.50, I believe. So, yeah, and now that we have the author here, she can sign it and it'll be a prized possession. So, anyway, so Kathy Adams-Clark, please.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Beth. It's so good to be here. And thanks, Tom, for the introduction. And Sharon and Larry, thank you for bringing me. And then Preston and Dorothy, it's so good to see you all again. So, I'm Kathy Adams-Clark and this is the Book of Texas Moths that I want to introduce to you today. And, see, get everything going, make sure it's working. Come on, come on. I might have to use your remote? Where's your remote?
Oh, it's just the arrows on your laptop?
Nope.
You got one?
Yeah. Mine should work. It worked before. Oh, wow. There we go. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Up on the top? Which one?
You're gonna...
This one?
Yep.
Yay, it works, it works, it works. Very good. Okay, technology works. So, the, the Book of Texas Moths is Gary Clark and Kathy Adams-Clark's 10th book that we have on the market. And there is nothing like seeing the catalog for the publishing house, and in this case it's Texas A&amp;M University Press, and seeing that your book is finally going to make it to press. It's horribly exciting and it never, never, never gets old to know that you've got a new book on the market. But then this book is pretty special because where the other nine books have been Gary Clark's writing and Kathy Adams-Clark's photography, this one is really about our good friends. And I know Tom and Sherry know John and knew John and Gloria Tweetin. Anybody else in this room know John and Gloria Tweetin? Okay. Which is really quite interesting. So, let me tell you a little bit about John and Gloria Tweetin. So, John and Gloria Tweetin were in what my husband Gary calls the greatest naturalists in Texas of the 20th century. Now, we've got Roy Beticek that I used to always consider one of the greatest naturalists of the 20th century in Texas. But I think in hindsight, it easily could be John Tweetin because of the legacy that John Tweetin has left behind with his wife Gloria. So, let me tell you just a little bit about this guy. And it's amazing because here it is, you know, 20 years into the 21st century and only one person in this room knows who he is. Yeah. And so, but you all were in Houston, so did you read John's column in the Houston Chronicle?
Did not.
Did not? Did you all know who he was?
No.
No, you didn't know who he was? Interesting. So, it's, it's, it's just kind of interesting to see how easy it is for us to kind of drop off the radar just a little bit and not be seen by the next generation. So, John Tweetin and Gloria Tweetin. John Tweetin, let me tell you a little bit about him. When John was a small child in Mankato, Minnesota, in the 1930s, John was a butterfly collector. And he was a rather precocious young child, but he would go out into the fields and he would collect butterflies. Now, that's what you did in the 1930s. You pinned butterflies and you made specimens and you learned how to pin them and you learned how to preserve them and that type of stuff. So, and, you know, Mankato, Minnesota happens to be a really cool place for butterflies in the summer too because they're horribly prolific up there. So, John started writing to other butterfly collectors as a small child throughout the United States. And he would exchange butterfly specimens for his butterfly collection. And this eventually progressed. Now, remember, we're talking the 30s going into the early 40s. This progressed into corresponding with people in Europe and Asia on their butterfly collections as well. And then World War II happens, we get a lot of museums that are destroyed and a lot of butterfly collections that are destroyed. And after World War II, Tweetin starts corresponding with these people again. And he's now rebuilding their butterfly collections in Japan and Europe. And so, he's this small child going into his teenage years, shipping butterflies around the world. And this is just kind of, this is this little guy. This is what he does. But he goes on to college and he gets a PhD in chemistry. And Gloria goes on to college and she gets a PhD in math. So, these are no dum-dums at all. But by the 1960s, John realizes that, as his story says, "I'm much more interested in the spider walking across the conference room table than I am what's being said in the conference room." So, he's working at Exxon in Baytown, Texas, and he has absolutely no interest at all in what's going on in the chemical refinery. So, he leaves his job at the Baytown Refinery and he becomes a nature photographer, which is kind of equally as improbable of me being a nature photographer for the last 30 years, but that's what John did. So, he starts as a nature photographer, he's photographing all kinds of things, but yet he's, he's also doing a radio show and he's, he starts writing a newspaper column for the Houston Chronicle in 1975 on nature. And that continues all the way to 1999. So, he wrote that for 20 something years, 24 years. And along the way, he's also learning his, his birds, he's learning his moths, he's learning his mammals. He's working with David Schmidley out of, David's now at University of Oklahoma on the, the book about Texas mammals. So, he's working with all different kinds of naturalists, learning everything. So, instead of just being a bird person, or instead of just being a butterfly person, John is learning everything about everything that he possibly can. So, throughout their collaboration, John and Gloria's collaboration, they ended up writing all of these books. You have some of those?
I have the first two, yeah.
You have the first two? Yeah. What, which ones do you have?
I have all.
You have all? Which ones? Any? Any of these that you...
The Birds of Texas.
The Birds of Texas book? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Anything else? So, we've got The Butterflies of Houston and Southeast Texas. This is where I learned butterflies. So, this is just fabulous book for learning butterflies, The Books of Texas, The Wildflowers of Houston and Southeast Texas, The Birds of Houston with B.C. Roberson, Coastal Wildlife Vanishing. They ended up with that equivalent 10 books, just like Gary and I have right now, which is kind of, which is kind of interesting. And along this time, after they're, they're, they're producing all of these books, then their nature columns are compiled into four small volumes or three small volumes by Texas A&amp;M Press. So, those weekly nature columns that they are doing are now bound in books as well. And it's kind of interesting as I read through these and, and as I saw them when they first came out, it's stories where we were together and we were off doing something together. Or they might have mentioned that they were with Tom and Sherry somewhere. So, as you start reading through here, you read, you realize that these are where our lives interacted with each other and our lives overlapped with each other. And by overlapped with each other, back in 1992, when I decided that I wanted to be a full-time nature photographer, I was Human Resource Director at Shriners Hospital in the Texas Medical Center in Houston, totally bored out of my mind with my job. And I was being published regularly in the magazines and calendars with my bird photography. And I decided I too wanted to be a nature photographer. And so, I ended up calling John one Sunday afternoon, shaking in my boots because I'm calling this famous, famous, famous guy. And my husband kept saying, "Call him, call him, you have to talk to him. You have to talk to famous people. You have to talk to important people." And I called John and it ended up being a two and a half hour long conversation with me just sitting on the floor writing everything and him telling me how to go into the business, how to break into the business, what the downsides are, all kinds of stuff, so I could write my business plan. And I do that now when people call and I can hear their voice cracking and they want to know, "How can I, how can I be a professional nature photographer or how can I be a better photographer?" And so, John and Gloria Tweetin and all of their, in all of their glory, turned out to be just on top of that, super, super nice people and very giving people and very sharing people. So, if you went to a nature talk 30 years ago, it would have been John standing up here. And believe me, you would have been here all afternoon because when he showed up with three carousels, you knew you were going to be here all afternoon, you know? It was going to be a long program, very interesting, but it was going to be a long program. And so, after that conversation with John, John started calling me and saying, "Would you like to market my photos? I don't want to market my photos anymore." And me being with the background in marketing, I started marketing his photos, which means that I was regularly getting to see all of these amazing photographs that he was taking and getting to learn as I was entering those photographs and working with those photographs. So, this ended up being a long collaboration in those early years. And as time went on, that collaboration with John and Gloria Tweetin and Kathy and Gary Clark just became tighter and tighter and tighter. So, we started interweaving our worlds even more. So, that's my husband on the far side before he lost a ton of weight. And then my photo editor from the Houston Chronicle right here, Catherine McIntosh, John and Gloria Tweetin, and that's Melissa Aguilar, my editor at the Houston Chronicle as well. And along this time, as we started knowing each other more and more, then I got the fabulous opportunity to travel more with John, going down into Mexico to look at butterflies, going down into Mexico, going down to Michoacan to see where the monarch butterflies go on their migration. I got a chance to go down with him twice to do that. And got a chance to just really be around this person who was totally immersed in nature. And as a result, also, his friends and his colleagues and the other people that he was with who were totally engrossed in nature and, you know, what this butterfly is called and what flower, what flower it's on and what it's nectarine on and that type of thing. So, there was this, this sharing of information with this fabulous naturalist. But what I didn't really know was that when John would go home at night after being out in the field with me or other people or on a Christmas bird count or on a breeding bird survey or whatever it was that he was doing, John went home at night and he wrote out these field notes. And he wrote them out in pencil on these forms that his wife developed. And these forms look like this if we blow them up so that you can read them. And so, this form, this started out on May the 10th, 2002. And here's his entry from 531, May the 31st, 2002. And this is a Blanchard's moth of some type. This is a Blanchard moth. He found it on the wall near its cocoon in Cameron County, Texas. And now John has taken this moth home and put it in a jar in his garage. And now with all those other moths that he's got and tarantulas and lizards and snakes and who knows what in his garage, he's making his rounds and he's entering in what's happening. So, he finds this moth on a wall on 510, but 531, it's a female, began laying eggs after he photographed it. Eggs hatching, very hairy, fairly large larvae, given various leaves, aspen, no, birch, no, chokeberry, no, plantains, no, dandelions, no, eighthsome, alfalfa, eighthsome. Ah, finally, it'll eat willow. Okay? So, okay, got that one. And then he confirms that it was a BEBB willow and it was ID'd by Dr. Larry Brown. So, now we finally have an idea of what this larvae was that he found on a wall, right? So, we finally have it. And it's raised on a broadleafed willow, so it was raised on that. And now it's July 5th of 2002, so he found it on May 10th and now it's still in its jar. And some larvae have pupated, spinning on twigs or bark, other very large, 55 millimeters long. And then over here in the, in the margin, that's where he's photographing it. And so, this, he has photographed the larvae here, he's photographed the cocoon on a twig. Here, he's photographed the cocoon on something that I haven't showed you. And then coming down again, largest larvae spun on side of jar, probably females. So, he's making all of these notes from these observations. And this means everything is real and everything is primary. So, this is all primary research. So, instead of going to the internet and writing a book saying that the, that the larvae are 55 millimeters long, no, this is his observations from this day in time, this moment. And so, everything on these forms is primary research. So, he's got all of these forms for everything. So, Tom, for instance, was talking about entering things into eBird and iNaturalist and that type of thing. How many of y'all are on eBird or iNaturalist and entering? Okay? Are you entering that much detail?
Yeah.
No, no. So, this is, this is Tweetin capturing this much detail for a historical record. And he's doing this almost every single night or every single time that he goes out. And then he's making this tour through his garage and all of this other stuff. Now, what you haven't noticed is that he found this in Los Fresnos, Cameron County, Texas. And there's a little tiny little squiggle right underneath that 531. And that's because he's now in Minnesota. So, to summer in Minnesota, John and Gloria have to take all the jars from their garage and put them into the camper and transport them to Minnesota so that they can continue to be observed and recorded and all that other stuff. Okay? No small feet, no peanut butter jar ever went unused. And then, and, you know, it's just, it was just kind of amazing to ever go to his house because, you know, all the ledges, we've got aquariums here. Well, these were all peanut butter jars and aquariums. And then he'd say, "You want to go to the garage and see the whatever is hatching in the garage or whatever?" So, sometimes when I would call John or he would call me, he'd say, "I'm sorry, something is hatching, I'll call you back." And so, because he had to hatch it and he had to doc, you know, or he had to photograph it and he had to document it. Well, all this naturalist's knowledge is going into his head. And then he's putting it into his butterfly books and he's putting it into his bird books because this is how he wrote his bird books and his wildflower books and his, and his butterfly books, was from all of this type of information. So, all of this stuff is coming from his primary research. So, for instance, with the type of work that he's doing, he's getting the larv, excuse me, the eggs, he's getting the larvae, and then he's getting the pupa, and then he's getting the adult. So, with the type of research that he's doing, he's getting all the different phases that these butterflies and moths might go through or these insects might go through, and he's photographing them all. So, photographing, for instance, this right here, this Sacropia, is probably in his bathroom. And so, his bathroom was his photographic studio. And he would go in there, close the toilet seat, of course. The toilet seat became the stand for whatever he was doing. And sometimes when I called, he'd say, "Sorry, can't, can't talk to you right now. I've got a so-and-so in the bathroom that needs to be photographed." And if you want to know from a photographer's point of view, he's using a 100-millimeter macro lens with a one point, with a extension tube to allow him to get even closer and he's using a ring flash. And so, most of the time, this is how he was doing his photography. And remember, this is film. This is slides. This is not digital. So, he doesn't even know if this is going to come out until he gets his pictures back. So, this is all done with film. And through all of these beautiful photos and this beautiful work that he did, then we get to see like Sacropium moth and we get to see how beautiful these creatures really are. So, this is an imperial moth. And we get to see them fresh, the, the wings are non-battered, non-tattered. And that's one of the beautiful things about his butterfly book as well because he was doing the same thing with his butterflies. We get to see like this girlfriend underwing and in his notes on this girlfriend underwing, he's saying, "Oh, it won't show me its underwing." And if you've ever tried to photograph an underwing moth, you know it's not letting you see the underwing of it because that's what the underwing looks like and that's what we want. And if you even try to touch those top wings, it's going to lock them black so that you can't see it, as if it knows that it has these gorgeous wings that we want to photograph. But this is the girlfriend underwing, if you get a chance to see the, the underside of the wings. It's an adult moonseed moth and it's roosting on a sunflower. And he puts it on a sunflower because this is where you would find a moonseed moth is on a sunflower. So, he puts them on the type of vegetation where you would see them. And even moths that don't look like moths, it's a plume moth, it doesn't even, you would never think that that was a moth if you saw it, but it's got an unusual shape to its wings. And, you know, you would just, this is one of those creatures where you would look at it and you'd say, "What is this?" You know? But it's a plume seed, snowberry clearwing moth and then with the clear wings on the moth, on the moth. Beautiful again because to me, it looks more like a bumblebee than it does a moth. And we wouldn't even think that this was necessarily a moth. An adult Prometheus moth with those gorgeous colors on it. Now, John's also not only a naturalist and a scientist, but he's also an artist. So, his books on the nature columns that they wrote, those are all illustrated with pen and ink drawings, Indian ink. So, he was doing pen and ink drawings as well. But look at how he took this adult Prometheus moth and look at the choice of the leaves that he put it on. So, you know, I would go find the nearest leaf and dump that moth on the nearest leaf and, you know, the nearest stone I could find, but no, 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 no. The artist in him has that beautiful purple in the Prometheus moth wings, but then there's that kind of same purple in those flower, in those leaves. So, you know, he had that ability also to produce these photos that were worth looking at and not just simply an illustration of such a beautiful creature. And a rosy maple moth, and I've seen very few of these in my life, but when I do see them, this is, this is a really, really cool moth to see. And then one of these moths that we get over on my side of Texas, Luna moth, we used to get a lot of them. And now they're just really, really rare, really hard to see. But in the piney woods of East Texas, I used to, this was fairly common, but we're just not getting them as much as we did anymore. And here's a southern emerald. And it's a bit hard to see because this is the larvae and it, and it camouflages itself by using pieces of the flower petals to hide itself. Now, how does it know that those, that it's yellow and it can put those flowers on it? How does it know it's yellow and it needs yellow flowers on it? How's, how's it know that? That's a, that's a incredibly smart creater, creature, creator, creature. But now that you know that, when you see these, these summer daisies, these fall daisies and you see them cut out, then you know that there's a larvae on there somewhere. And it's some southern emerald larvae, beautiful green butterfly when it, moth when it finally emerges. And this lar, this horned spam, spam, spanworm, look at those little appendages and that, that, you know, it just looks like it would hurt you if you touch it. But it's, you know, it's just the way that they, the way that they look and the way that he was able to show you how it looks and pull it away from its background. You've got on the far side, hylogryphic moth, one of my favorites. And then the hallogryphic moth on the other side, one of my favorites, again, one of the ones that I really, really, really like to see. And then we have these, by the way, not the same species, but going all the way down into South America. Because I was recently down in Ecuador and saw several of them down there. He also documented that sometimes he would have a larvae for months, years, and then when it emerged, it had a fly. It had been parroticized. So, he might sit and watch something and observe it and take care of it for years and it turned out to be, mm, nothing, you know, parroticized. So, you know, what emerged out of it? Some sort of, some sort of strange fly. And that would be in his notes that, okay, it's been sitting there for a year and a half and what came out of it? Uh, nothing, you know? So, the, just the reality of it. And so, as, as we're going through... And so as, as we're going through, as he's going through all of this and all of his observations and all of his photography and things, then of course, our lives, my husband's and mine are intertwining with him as we're becoming more and more, not related to each other, but as we're just becoming more and more intertwined with each other's lives. So I'm his photo representative. I'm calling him and asking him about all these photographs that he's sending to me. I'm learning about all of these critters that he's photographing and what he's doing. And then in turn, as he's getting older and older, he's giving me speaking engagements and turning things over to me and that type of thing. So you know, I'm taking knowledge from him and he's taking knowledge from me. But our lives are just becoming much more intertwined with each other. And John and Gloria wrote the nature column in the Houston Chronicle for, as I said, 24 years. And in 1999, John called me one day and he said, okay, we're not going to do the column anymore. Do y'all want it? And it'd always been a joke that they'll just give it to us. Like Houston Chronicle, fourth largest newspaper in the United States. Yeah, sure, you can just give us your column. Yeah. So John called and said, do you all want this? And I said, well, yeah, let me talk to Gary. And my husband Gary is the dean of science at Lone Star College. And I call, with full-time job. And I called Gary and Gary says, well, yeah, how can we not? And so then I called John back and said, okay, we'll take it. And then John called me about 15 minutes later and said, okay, the Houston Chronicle says, all right. April 1st, 1999, that's your first column. Well, we didn't even meet these people. Yeah. So April 1st, 1999 is our first nature column. And this is John leaving the Houston Chronicle after 24 years. And so we ended up writing about John and Gloria Tweetin, you know, as this handoff that we had. We wrote the column then for another 26 years, which means 50 years the Houston Chronicle did a nature column and every single Saturday. And they ended it the 31st of December of 2004. So it's that, that was the 50-year run of a nature column every single Saturday. And what Gary wrote is kind of neat because Gary said that joy the Tweetins have given us, we owe them great gratitude for sure. But we also owe them the promise that we will continue our eager interest in birds, butterflies, wildflowers, bugs, bats, snakes, lizards, and all the creatures, big and little, that make our earth and our local community a beautiful place. So where John had given this to the community for his 24 years, then we were pledging that we would give it back to the community as well. And that beautiful joy that he always had. John gave this great program on how much nature you could see in just a vacant lot. And many of you all have been through that before where you go out here to do a survey. And once you get out there and start walking around, you realize everything that's out there. And so we had learned that from John and Gloria Tweetin. And then all of a sudden, October 12th, 2009, he dies. And it was quite a shock to us because he went and did a nature program, a whole week, weekend of nature programs down at one of the nature festivals. And he wasn't feeling very well. And he came home, went to the doctor on Monday, and the doctor immediately sent him to the hospital. Tuesday, they told him that he was completely filled with cancer. Wednesday, John and Gloria and their son spent the time together. And then Thursday, they started calling friends. So we arrived on Thursday and then stayed. And then we got to see him again on Friday. We got to see him again on Saturday. And by Sunday, his wife and I were in the room with him, the only people. And I was on one side and she was on the other side and he died. And so within a week, this powerhouse with all of this incredible knowledge was just like dead. You know, and in a lot of ways, it was good because that was the best way for him to go. And luckily, a lot of us got to see him before he went. But it was, it was just kind of a shock that all of a sudden, in full dynamic life, this guy, and he's not that old, this guy would just leave us. So along with everybody else in this tragedy of him going from our lives was the idea of who's going to finish the last book? Because his last book was the Book of Texas Moths. And so our editor at Texas A&amp;M Press said, you know, what are we going to do? And isn't this funny to be a deathbed conversation of who's going to finish your last book? And that's where on the deathbed, he decided that Kathy and Gary would finish his last book. So we were to finish the moth book. In some of those conversations also, we were writing a bird book at that time. And we asked him if we could call it the Book of Texas Birds because he has the Texas Bird Book. And so he gave us that blessing and gave Texas A&amp;M Press that blessing as well. So it was always understood that we would finish that moth book. Except we already had the Book of Texas Birds to finish and we already had the Backroads of Texas book to finish. So we had some other stuff that we needed to get out of the way. So it was always kind of understood that somewhere along the way, we would finish this moth book. So low and behold, seven years ago, it was like, okay, we're going to finish the moth book. Now, we have to put this in perspective, how we're going to finish this moth book because he really has not done anything except gather the material. But what do we have gathered? So when we start going and looking, this is the first field note he ever wrote in October 16th, 1978. So this is field note number one. See number one up at the top, Spice Bush Swallowtail? So this is field note number one. And this is field note number 3,278 from April of 2009. So he stopped writing field notes. He died in October, stopped writing field notes in April. So we have field notes from 1978 to 2009 that his wife has put in binders. So they're in binders. And there's, there's something like 100 and something pages per binder. Now, that's for Lepidoptery. There's binders for insects, there's binders for snakes, there's binders for birds, there's binders for mammals. So she was meticulous in these binders of his field notes. But now these field notes have got to be something. Somebody's got to go through them, right? So A&amp;M Press said, okay, we'll PDF these, we'll create a PDF. So there's some poor college student that's like, you know, feeding pages into a scanner and we're creating PDFs of them. And it turned out to be folder number one, all the way down to folder number 3,200 and something of PDFs. So these are only the Lepidoptera. These are only the moths and the butterflies. So this, of course, takes six or eight months to do. And so six or eight months of this come. And in that, that means now I have all of these pages that I have to go through. And so for the next two years, when I have spare time, I am opening up these files. And for instance, up here, page number 18 from 1978, this is for the Luna moths. So I would have to go through all of these pages and move everything about Luna moths over to the Luna moth file because it's just in his chronological order. So in Evergreen, Texas in 1978, found six larvae on a branch of small sweetgum. Two died possibly from handling half inch to one and a half inches long. Larvae have different size red spots and turbacles. October 24th, 78, two inches long. 25th, they're all four have spun leaves, the pupa are very active and the cocoons jump when handled. And then the moths emerged on November 17th, November 27th, and December 14th. So those observations are all coming from various places in these binders. And then he's finding them in Cold Springs, Texas. And he's finding them in Wallaceville, Scenic Creek, Nature Area, Coontz and Harden County, Big Creek, Little Thicket, all the way through. So I had to go through all 32 of those, of those huge binders and find every time that he was talking about Luna moths and put it all into one big Luna moth file. Just took two years. And on top of that, I'm trying to maintain his voice. So he would many times write an entire paragraph, which meant that I've got Tweetin's words. So we tried to maintain his voice as much as possible so that it wasn't my voice. So when it says larvae found on the ground had large red turbules on larvae of number 18, began spinning action 11 cocoon on bottom of jar. So anytime that I could get those words of John Tweetin's, I tried to use those words of John Tweetin's. So in the book, we tried to use as many of his phrases and his words as we possibly could. So we were trying not to interject ourselves. This is, that's why it's called The Book of Texas Moths. And it's with John Tweetin because we tried not to put our own stuff into it. And then here's how it kind of all starts coming together now. Now, you remember all of those slides that we talked about? Yeah. So all of those slides are, were either in my possession in storage or they were all just given to the Texas A&amp;M Press and put into the vault. So these metal boxes filled with slides are put in the vault at Texas A&amp;M Press. And that's why they kept saying, you know, who's going to do this book, Kathy? I mean, you know, we got this stuff sitting in the vault. And these slides are in no order whatsoever. Because if he needed to do a slide program here at the Riverside Nature Center, he just started going through all these boxes and put it all together. And then he all put them back all in the other stuff. So they're not in any sort of organized, except they're Lepidoptera. So that means butterflies are in there and moths are in there. But you know, there's no sort of organization of them. And there's about 50 of them. So once we had written all the text, and I have to hand it to Sharon, Jay here, because Sharon used to work on the Texas Wildlife Magazine for the Wildlife Federation? Texas Wildlife? Texas Wildlife Association. So she worked on that magazine with David Langford. So Sharon ended up being one of our proofreaders. Because I'm not a great writer. I can do a whole lot of good organization, but I'm not a great writer. So she ended up having to do all this proofreading that went into this because we had to make it coherent before we sent it to the editors. But now I have to find the photos that go with this. So to find the photos that go with this, I have to start going through all of these boxes. And I'll come over here next to the deer and hopefully I won't knock it off. But if you look on the side of the slides, he's got numbers right there. And somebody asked at one time from the press, do you know what these numbers mean, Kathy? And when I looked at them, it was like, oh, yeah, they go with the field notes. So that right there means that that's from page number 1986 or whatever. And that's this actual critter that he photographed when he was doing the measurements or when he was telling me how big it was or whatever. So now I have to go through and find which one of these he's talking about when that we're now highlighting in the book. So which one of these finally made it into the book? So that these are his photos of that butterfly or that moth that we're talking about in the book. So this took me during COVID. See all the boxes? Texas A&amp;M Press gave me my own little room. And I got to go and just sit in it because this is during COVID. And so we're all masked up and everything. And I ended up spending a couple of weeks just going through slide boxes. And then sometimes when I would have written about something from his field notes, I would have remembered John talking about that. And I can't find the slide. It's in here somewhere. So there were several where it was, I need to finish this because I know there's a slide that illustrates this because he told me about it. And I know, I know it's there somewhere. So when you look closely at this, you see that we've got little pencil marks. Once again, he must have gone through a gillion mechanical pencils in his life. But we got little pencil marks, Latin name, common name on every slide. Latin name, common name down here, what family it was in. And then here is the related field note for that photograph. So meticulous record-keeping and meticulous documentation of these subjects. So it goes back, that photo goes back to that field mark or field page. And we can put them together and, and mark them together. And then that led to having to put them into the book and make sure that the right photos went with the right moths. And the right photos went upright or upside down, depending on how the moth was supposed to be. And making sure that the right photos went with the right moths and all the little language that we had to talk about. And that's how we end up getting the book. So when the book finally came out, it was fabulous to see that in his notes, he talked about how this moth, this broom moth had these different color variations from the exact same eggs and the larvae being raised the same way and the cocoons being raised in the same way. And we get these various color variations. So we now get to see that to know that, no, that's not a different moth. It's just a different color variation. So we get these, these beautiful little things that are in there, like the whole different colors of asp flannel moths. And where he even writes that they sting like the fury. I accidentally brushed one in removing another and my finger hurt and burned for 10 hours. I had to see if it worked. I did, I did, I did. I just had to touch one, one time, just to see. But you know, to see that that flannel moth looks like that and to see how they fit together and where he's talking about them being fuzzy and that type of stuff. So anywhere in the book where you see that there's quotation marks, that's where we're trying to use his exact words instead of ours. And, but what's interesting with this also is that we've given in the book locations where he saw them. And then taking your results off of iNaturalist, we've now added where they're currently seen in Texas. Because what we did with John's work is that is from 1979 to 2009. And you know, things are changing. Y'all have already realized that, right? Things are changing. And so some of the moths that he saw, there are no iNaturalist records of those in Texas. So, and then when he's talking about where he saw it, that's not necessarily what's showing up on iNaturalist right now or where it's being reported. And we've got a lot more reporters for iNaturalist out there than we did in John's days. So it's kind of interesting. So this is a snapshot of that moment in time that we now have for history of where they were seen and, and how often they were seen and what seasons they were seen and what they were eating off of and that type of thing. So it's kind of neat to know that we've also got this historical record as well. Questions? Yeah?
I have one. When he photographed his various Lepidoptera, especially the adult stage, did he chill them to make them whole stuff?
No. No, they're freshly emerged.
Okay.
Yeah, they're freshly emerged. Yeah, and John and I talked about that a lot because when I had, I haven't chilled in many, many years. When I tried to chill, I ended up killing. And that, that made me feel really, really bad. And he was photographing them when they'd freshly emerged. And so he had a little bit of advantage is that, is that they weren't out wild, wild free flying. Yeah, little window. But also with the moths, moths are much easier to photograph than butterflies. Much, much easier because they just don't move. Once they get on a wall, they're on a wall, you know? So they're, they're pretty good. But no, he didn't, he didn't chill things. Other questions?
Kathy, when they, when they emerge, do the colors change as they age?
I think as those wings unfurl and they, they pump more air into the wings, they're not necessarily going to get changed once that, that wing is finished. Yeah. Yeah. Any instances like that, Tom? Where the wing, I don't think the wings change. No. Yeah, and you know, it's only like three days. They don't have, they don't have much time. Yeah. Other questions? Yes?
So I think of moths as being out at night mostly. How does that work with the photography and all?
Well, it was a little easier for him because they're emerging, you know, they're emerging. And so now he And so now he can photograph them anytime. So it was a little easier with him. But yes, they do come out at night. So when we set up our black lights, for instance, in our moth lights, I was doing that at Block Creek during the springtime and setting up the sheet and that type of thing. So they're out at night. But what's interesting is as the sun comes up, they'll kind of go hide under something. And they just kind of roost. So I just took apart, when I took apart my Halloween decorations, there were moths all up in the hats of the little witches. And it was kind of interesting that, wow, everybody crawled up into here, this little dark place. Yeah. So they're out during the, they're out during the day. Yeah. Yeah, so, you know, you can do some natural. The larvae, of course, are out. And then, you know, the pupa fall down into your leaves. This is one more advertisement for do not, do not throw away your leaf litter. Everybody knows that. You want to rake it into your flower beds, because no telling how many pupas are in that leaf litter. Tell your neighbors and friends, rake that leaf litter in, you know, don't send it off. Others? Some of these moths too, if you don't know their size, we're dealing with half-inch, quarter-inch. Some of these moths are really, really small. But the good thing about moths is they're everywhere. Yeah. Tom?
The thing I found about John was that his books, when you open up the Birds of Texas by Peter Seuss or whoever, you know, it's just a typical description.
Uh-huh.
And that's it. Everything that he wrote was brought into life.
Yes. Yes.
Versus just, if you wish, the stamp.
Yes, yes.
If the world was part of it. And that's what I enjoyed about his books.
Yeah.
And that, the first one I had was, I think it was the Wild Song.
Uh-huh.
But that, to me, was what John was all about.
Yeah, yeah. His words. And that's one of those things that my husband Gary Clark also, is sometimes, like in Gary's book, Book of Texas Birds, he tells a story about the bird, of me sliding down the hill or, you know, me breaking something or whatever. He tells the story of this bird, but you're going to remember that bird because of that story. And John did the same thing. He was able to tell you a story about that moth or about that butterfly, so that you remembered it. In his book of, his butterfly book, he explains the Latin words and what the Latin words mean, and many of them are about mythology. And so you suddenly remember, you remember this stuff. It's not the cut and dry. Yeah. And a friend of ours wrote a book while John was still alive. And I said, when we got preview copies of it, I said, "John, what'd you think?" And John said, "There's not a single piece of primary research in there." Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. And that's when it was like, "Oh, okay, okay." Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's different if you observed it and you actually did it. It's another thing if you copied that off the internet.
Put the sheets out.
Uh-huh.
Put the lights on. It's amazing how many different kinds of moths.
And it doesn't take long. It only takes about an hour and a half, two hours. So if you can ever do any black lighting, it is amazing how many are out there. Yeah. Yeah, and sphinx moths, there's a sphinx moth. Somebody brought in a sphinx moth. Yeah. Is it still back there? Yeah. So somebody, somebody brought this, found it in their garage. So it's already, it's already passed, but this is a sphinx moth. Hummingbird moth? Yeah, looks like a hummingbird moth. And when you put out the black lights, I noticed in March and April, these were the primary moth that you saw. Yeah, yeah. So you would think that they would be very unusual, but they're really not. And that's here in the hill country, so, you know, it's a, it's a, so, yeah, the black lights are really neat. Yeah.
The rule of thumb, I think, to some degree, is for the hill country area, there's about 170 to 200 species of butterflies. Moths, you can multiply that times 10.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, there's just so many of them, so many of them. And so many that we really don't know anything about. Yeah.
His note-taking, his meticulous note-taking is very inspiring. I don't know how much work that is, because I go back and go, "Why didn't I label that photo?" I don't have time for that. But when people are posting things on iNaturalist, I love, it rarely happens. And I try to do this, if there's some interesting little tidbit about that creature, to put it up there in the notes. Because that information, you know, when people are observing, it's much more than, "Oh, I'm going to figure out what this is."
And that is, if you think about it, our current way of communicating this. And so it is important that it's 10 millimeters long or that it's 35 millimeters long, or that, that is important. And, you know, with his, how long did it take this larvae to emerge? And I would have to do that over 10 or 15 different observation periods of what was the average time that it took this larvae, these larves to emerge. Yeah.
Does the book tell what typically, what plant the larvae?
Uh-huh.
So it tells the host plant?
Uh-huh. Yes.
Give more importance to those plants?
Yes, exactly. And then to look at those, to, you know, to realize that sometimes he's, you know, he's on a survey with a bunch of other people, and they're finding it on this plant or this plant or this plant. Yeah. And I used what he had and then also what the current literature, what iNaturalist is currently saying. So we pulled that in. So in the text, it might be iNaturalist is reporting that it'll eat this, this, and this, but John only fed it this. So trying to preserve as much of his information as possible. Other questions? So I hope you take inspiration from it, and I hope that you see how important your little notes are. You know, all those, if you're keeping, like, I have, for instance, a yard journal of what's in my yard, and I've been keeping that now for about 15 or 20 years. And, you know, just making periodic notes, not every single day, but just things like yard journals or your iNaturalist reports or any type of records that we can leave behind. I also give this to you as an inspiration, because how many pieces of work like this are sitting in a vault somewhere waiting for somebody to come open them up? The famous historian David McCullough has a book, and I might have gotten the wrong author, Pioneers, about the Ohio settlers. Y'all know who I'm talking about? No, David McCullough? It's called Pioneers, about the people who settled Ohio. That all came about him giving a program like this and one of the librarians saying, "You know, if you want to come over, we've got these incredible diaries from the early settlers that nobody has, nobody's got any interest in." And he went over there and found these diaries from the early settlers, and that ended up being his book. Just diaries sitting in a library gathering dust. So if we wouldn't have come along, the slides and the field notes would have been sitting gathering dust. And nobody would have known what those numbers meant, unfortunately. So luckily, it was me that knew what they meant. And we've got books in the back, and then also just... Come on. Yeah, there you go. What I do, if you ever want to travel with me, Preston and Dorothy have traveled with me before to locations. I do photo tours around the world. So Costa Rica next to here. And then cultural, Croatia, Slovenia, Amalfi, Sicily, oh my God, Coyote, I'm sorry. Czech Republic, and then Tanzania for animals, of course. And then Costa Rica in '27. The Lofoten Islands, that's way up north in Norway for northern lights. Faroe Islands, Greenland. I just did Greenland this year. Absolutely amazing. You need to go to Greenland before it gets ruined, because it is really an incredible country right now. And then Ecuador for birds. And then here's all my contact information, if you'd like to keep in touch with me. Thank you all very much. There's books in the back, if you'd like.